Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order and the first item is the consideration of the agenda as presented, I think. Councilmember Howard has an amendment.
Yes, I would like to add to the agenda, the Somerset whales swim coming up.
So we'll do that after, we'll do that after number six.
Whenever you want.
So, so why don't you move the agenda as amended?
I can't, I'm busy.
Okay, and then is her second?
I'll second it.
We have a discussion here, not all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we will move to our public comment period. I see, I don't see anybody in the audience here. Is there anybody online?
No.
Which is okay. Thank you. So we will now go to the report from our town permit administrator. The Honorable Steve Serco.
So, I've updated the report from last month. All of the activities have changed from the previous month. I did yell, thought that we would be talking about fifty-four hundred Trent variance requests today when I prepared the report. That's why it's in the reading. I thought it would be rescheduled to another date in the near future. I wanted to go through it, item by item, and there were some questions about the building of the point.
Did you want to go through it, or do you want to take questions?
Oh, I prefer just to take questions.
Okay, council, president, bar, do you have any questions?
I have no questions on it.
Councilor Haller.
No questions.
Councilor Kumar.
No questions, thanks, Steve.
Councilor Ravak.
Um, so I have a question about five-five-two-two Greystone Street. So they, I guess, are not going to be able to meet our forty-five day ability to put grass and like, you know, some sort of landscaping in the front yard because they're lifting a pool over the house.
That is it.
Um, don't, do they have to get like a permit or like something? Well, I guess two questions. Do they need a permit for that kind of crane and like that kind of work?
I can, I can answer that. They, not for that, as long as they don't, as long as they don't have to block the street for it. They'd have to get a permit if they were going to block the street.
And do they not have to get like special approval by the town council to with, to not hit the forty-five day?
Yeah.
And so where does that stand?
So they're right now hopeful that they might be able to squeeze it in, but not, they'll need to come to the next council meeting.
But that will be already past their deadline.
Yeah, so they'll have to stop work.
Let, let's ask the town attorney, that's a good question. So, Mr. Town Attorney, what happens?
What happens if the deadline passes?
And they're not, and they're not completed, doesn't the manager have to issue a stop work order?
Yes.
Can we do like, is there any like fining? Because I mean, they don't want to do the work, so.
Ask town attorney, I think so.
Can we find them?
We, we can't issue a fine for violation of an ordinance. I have to remind myself how this condition was imposed. Let me see. Is, is the, is it a condition of the permit, or was it just a condition of the decision? I don't recall.
Condition of the permit.
Okay, yeah, then violation of permit conditions is a citable offense.
And then what's the, do you want to ask the man?
How much is it, do you know?
I have to check that as well, probably one hundred dollars, but I'll look at that.
For every day?
Correct. If you issue a new citation every day, be a hundred dollars, but missing the deadline. Well, I need to think about that. Um, I need to look at a couple of things, so I can do that now.
Just, was that, was that at our last council meeting, or was that a special work session meeting? Does anyone know? Okay, so, so basically, we're coming up, you know, essentially on thirty days right now, and our date time was forty-five.
Well, um, I'll check the exact days. Is the forty-five days began when I issued the permit, which happened a bit later after the meeting? Because of the time it took the Ron to prepare the decision.
Okay.
To approve it. So I'll double check, but I believe mainly is when I issued the actual permit.
Okay, so it could be close to the July meeting or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, because, I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but.
You are.
Okay, I definitely think that they should be fined if they're not going to uphold the forty-five days.
Okay, so, thank you for raising that, and it, it's up to the town manager working with the lawyer and me. So we'll take that under advisement because it is pretty egregious.
Yeah.
And so thank you, and we will, we will get back to you. We will review it.
Thank you.
But, but I mean, as of now, Mr. Permit Administrator, the, they've said that they probably won't, but we don't know until the day. You know, so we can't take action until the deadline.
Right, right, right.
So, so thank you for raising that, and we will, we, we will strictly enforce it.
Right, I'm sure, I mean, I would hope that they will follow the deadline, and so at that time, they will have landscaping in their front yard.
Because it's important, it's important for all applicants to understand that, that this isn't, you know, this is a serious matter. And so, I think, thank you for raising it. Did you have any other questions?
So, it says with a four to six week lead time for the infinity pool and jacuzzi. Do we know if they requested that? I guess it doesn't matter.
They came, they've ordered the pool, and they've already started construction of the foundation. That's just what I can think about. Today, about a week for the foundation, then we're going to start getting the hole for the sister in the rear yard. That'll be about two weeks' process to finish.
Okay, okay. Well, hopefully, they'll just follow the permit and have it landscaped in the front. We didn't ask for the back. Okay.
But we will, we will, thank you for raising that, we will, we will get back to you.
Okay, thanks. That's my only question, thank you.
Councilor Con.
Yes, Councilor Con, do you have any questions?
So just to clarify, if they ask for an extension of their forty-five days, then, then what happens? Then there's no fine thing, we are, unless we deny the permit.
Ask, I mean, they can't ask for an, at what point can they ask for an extension, Mr. Town Attorney?
An extension's not available because the forty-five deadline is part of the decision, so council would have to approve an amended decision.
So they can't, so they can't right now apply for an extension? It doesn't, it doesn't negate that.
Right, of that one condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we will, but I'm glad you both have raised this because we haven't, we haven't been strict enough in the past when this has happened. And there's been in my tenure, one or two cases where it just dragged on and on, and the people really weren't respectful of the decision that the council made. So we will make sure this time, especially because there's been so much public input on this situation that they like, no, no, no more excuses, you know?
So, I, I have a question on a few other houses, but just to go back to, to this one. I understand that the crane will be located on their front yard.
Yes.
Given the height of this house, I'm somewhat doubtful whether the crane will be in the front yard, or whether it might be also on the street. Is there any way in which the town, either you, or Wayne, or somebody who's in town hall can be present on the day to make sure that if, if that crane is in the street, then that's a violation of something or the other, and we need to step in. Because I think the neighbors have had just about enough of being told it's one thing, then another, and then, so that's, that's, my only request is that it's going to be a crane. I don't know anything about the engineering, but just given the size, I wonder if the crane could really be that close to the house and lift that thing over the house or wherever it's going. It sounds like quite a project.
I think it would be good for the for Mr. Serco to raise these issues with the applicant. And let, let the applicant know that the council asks these questions.
What if they come back and say, oh, what if we need?
So, so then on, on a few others. On four-seven-one-six Fallstone, five-five-two-nine Surrey. In both these cases, these were violations. In one case, a stop work order was issued. I just want, just, just clarification, Steve. What is the status of, so we said four-seven-one-six, is a notice of violation has been issued. Does that mean that?
I'll put that, so, yeah, so for that one, four-seven-one-six issued a notice, but the, I still have an attorney property owner, so I'm going to have Ron draft one, have it sent via Ron, and then.
Five-five-two-nine regarding the non-conforming fence and the larger patio. Were these corrected or not corrected?
So the fence can, is in the process of being corrected. So is the other thing, but the other thing's going to require a permit amendment application. So I've been following up with them, and their current permit expires June twelfth, and they are not requesting an extension. So the stop work order will be posted again, uh, June twelfth.
So what happens if they, they can, they can file an extension permit in this case?
Yep.
In order to, in order to repair, in order to change the size of this patio?
Yeah.
And then, in five, so both of these are pending administrative action because the violations have not been addressed. Right, okay. Then, finally, on five-five-two-eight Trent, which I guess is the house that's at sale now. It says there that the county sediment control building residential fence permits have not been finalized. Are they, I mean, are there consequences that the house is being sold on the market without any of these permits, or it's, I mean, how's, how does this work?
Well, they have the permits, they just haven't, they're awaiting final inspection.
Final inspection.
And I was close to looking at the contractor this morning, indicating that expects the final inspection by WSSC, Washington Gas and Hookups this week. That was good middle way, getting those outside for party individuals to check it, and then they'll get the county firm inspectors, and he expects to get it final next week.
The house is the sale with no water running?
If that is true. It's likely why it's not actually sold.
All right, buyers, buyers can't go and use the bathroom.
That's why you have neighbors.
Spends three million, and you don't have water.
Councilor Haller, you have a final question?
No, I, I, um.
You got it answered. Okay, okay, thank you very much, sir. Excellent. The next item, tree removal permits. Public hearing consideration of the tree removal permit submitted by Sophia Maroon for the property located in fifty-five-twelve Greystone. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Mulberry Tree, Little Over Republicans, requested. It does have injury at the base. Mulberry Tree is a invasive species. The owner wanted to take it out and plant it, a deadly species. Another concern I have is it's right, I think it's right on the property line, so that needs to be verified, or that permission from the neighbor that's right for the.
That, that's it. And it is the applicant's.
Right here, okay.
Council President Bar, do you have any questions?
Well, have we heard from the neighbor at all at this time?
No, so if, it would need to be a condition approval that before you know it was issued, but the neighbor approves.
All right. I, at this time, I've got no other questions.
Councilor Haller.
No, Rob, Robin just asked my question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Kumar.
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Ravak.
No questions.
Councilor Kana.
No questions, thank you.
Are there? Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'll move the conditional motion to approve the tree permit pending approval from the neighbor that the tree can be removed. That's the neighbor at fifty-five-fourteen Greystone.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, that's acceptable, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I, I might just add.
Okay.
Be approved with the condition that the neighbor consent to the removal. And if that consent is not obtained, then the applicant must provide boundary survey reflecting the tree is wholly on the applicant's property.
You accept that?
Well, I can accept that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
It, it, the only thing is, the other way we could do it is we could basically table it on our next meeting, and then just prove it evenly at our next meeting, assuming we're part of the neighbor. That's the only other alternative I see. The question is, do we want to do that, or do we want to use the motion?
Well, the motion is on the floor. If you wanted to do that, you would have to vote this down and then to table.
I'm bringing it up so as people want to vote it down, you can do that too, so all right.
So does ever, is there further discussion?
I'm finding.
Hearing then, all those in favor?
Of the original motion?
Yeah, yes. All those opposed, are you?
I'll stay on.
You're abstaining, okay, thank you. The next item, thank you, Dr. Feather. The next item is introduction of an ordinance to amend the definition of the established building line. Add requirements for driveway aprons and curb cuts to lead unnecessary provisions to change instances of clerk treasurer to town manager and clarify existing provisions. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, or proposed ordinance has been discussed at several work sessions. But just to quickly summarize, is it changes the definition of established building line. If, there's a couple of instances in the building code still in these sections where it says clerk treasurer into the town manager. So it changes it there. Like the title says, it removes some unnecessary and outdated provisions and clarify some of their existing ones. And then the other big thing is driveways, it requires a survey. And then most recent change is that it would make the town responsible for maintenance of lawfully constructed curb cut driveway aprons, double sidewalks.
And Mr. Town Attorney, did you want to add anything?
So, yeah, I'll just add to that one other change since the last time you've seen it, I believe, is to clarify in the EBL definition that when we're deciding which homes to include in the calculation, we're not going to consider intersections that exist on paper, like a subdivision plat, but that not, have not actually been constructed. So the, the ordinance says we, we don't consider homes that are beyond an intersection. And an issue arose as to whether we should consider, you know, in an intersection to exist that hasn't been built yet, but is shown on a plat. And so this draft would say, no, we're only going to consider actual intersections that have been constructed, not hypothetical ones or paper streets, you know, shown on plats. And then, ju- just to note, the, the current draft would provide that the town is responsible for maintaining driveway aprons after their initial construction by applicants. But I have a comment in the margins, you know, in response to Rohit's suggestion, the council could discuss whether they want to limit the town's responsibility to only those aprons that have a sidewalk cut through them. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So remember, everybody, this is an introduction, so, and you have to vote introduce. And before you do, you can amend it.
That's right.
But remember, you can also amend it after it's gone through the process. So with that, council, president bar, do you have any questions?
Right, well, that, that was the issue that we brought up at the prior meeting, which is because we have sidewalks only on one side, then not all properties have sidewalks going through them. And how do we handle that was, was, was the issue there? We talked about that two different ways. One is just define the town's responsibilities only those with sidewalks. The other is to include everything, but prioritize those with sidewalks when we're repairing them. That was basically it. All right.
Yeah, that's what I want to say.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Haller, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess I wonder, um, what's this going to cost over time? I know we can't say, you know, X amount of dollars right now, but it sounds like this could be a tremendous amount of money if we fix all these aprons, if need be. And, um, I worry, I wonder also, has anyone thought about, um, you know, maybe people will take care of their aprons, just because we're going to pay for them?
Well, why don't you, so, why don't you discuss that when you have, when you're debating how to introduce it? So right now, it's just, you have questions on what's written?
Okay.
Or any amendment you want to, you, you don't, okay, thank you. Councilor Kumar.
No questions at this introduction stage, thank you.
Councilmember Ravak.
I don't have any questions.
Councilor Kana.
Yes, thanks. Ron, on this, on this point regarding whether the town's responsibility should be only on sidewalk side or on both sides of the street. What, in your experience, has been good practice from other jurisdictions in our area?
Yes, yeah, great question. I, I, I looked a bit, couldn't find an example where the municipality was just maintaining the aprons that have sidewalks. It can certainly be done, but i- in my experience, Town and Chevy Chase, Martin's Editions, Chevy Chase View, for example, they maintain all the aprons. And I think the thought there is, there is some goal to standardize them for aesthetics and for function in requiring aprons to be only a certain width in order to preserve street parking. You know, that they be truncated in a similar fashion so that they operate properly. So, and if those are concerns, then it does make sense to regulate them all. On the other hand, if the primary concern is just making sure sidewalks remain ADA compliant and safe for pedestrians, then it, it would make sense just to regulate the aprons that have the sidewalks, or just maintain, rather.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so there's another question. Okay, so one thing, so now's the opportunity for you to discuss and hopefully vote introduce this. You, you know, one option is that you might want to separate this driveway issue for the future and just leave it the way it is now, and, and then and pass the, you consider passing this, but it's, it's up to you.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So with that, unless anybody's prepared to make a motion to introduce it, do you want to discuss it? Does anybody want to amend what's before you?
I make a motion to intro- to adopt the
Introduce.
To introduce this, sorry, introduce this ordinance as drafted.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, is there a discussion?
I, I have a discussion question. Do we have an apron problem in the town? Is that what this is for? Does we have a problem?
We have, yeah.
We have a big problem?
Yes, it's not a big problem. Fortunately, it's not a big problem, but the good, I think you were asking earlier about whether residents are going to stop looking after the.
Or whether it's a big, well, whether.
I would say, I would say, yeah, what you definitely a big problem is, but you know, if I see, I think in each block, there are probably one driveway that's really, I mean, one apron or whatever, that is really bad shape per block. And there may be a couple of more that are, um.
Well, let me, before you go on, before you go, let me introduce a fact. About ten years ago, our former and, and possibly our, Mr. Serco could do the research. But about ten years ago, Mr. Plummer, who was our, who was our permit administrator at the time, who was a retired state highway engineer, he surveyed the town, and he identified, I think it was like fifty or sixty. Maybe, I don't know, this is before town attorney's time, but I think fifty or sixty were not to code.
Code, okay, I can't speak to code.
And at the time, we decided, we, you know, and that's something that we could have enforced on all of them. And, and we did, I think at that point, we were renovating curbs or something, and there was an opportunity very cheaply because it was in, in bulk. So I think that at the time, for a couple thousand dollars, you could get a beautiful new driveway apron. So, so I, I, I do think that this is something that definitely needs to be considered, how we're going to address it, because we're interested in what the town looks like, and, and beyond the safety issues, it also is an appearance issue. So that's all I'm going to say. I want to add, I want to add that fact. So I think we do need to get a lot more facts. But tonight, we're just introducing it, so, so.
All right, so you made the motion to introduce it, right?
Yeah.
Seconded it, all right, so.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think what we need to do is do a lot of research and also put it out in, in the, in all of our media that this is an issue, and, and, and find out what have, you know, it's possible that from ten years ago to now, that many people fix their driveways, or there might have been new houses in some of these places, I don't know. But I know there's, there are a lot of, like Councilor Kana says, there are a number of driveways that, that are public safety. And, and I think that the most severe ones need to be addressed because we're, we're all concerned about public safety in our town, so.
Is there anybody we can get like a little list of what somebody's felt like?
Yeah, well.
Because I, I, I can't envision.
I think, I think take pictures, I think do a lot of research, and, but I think it's a very important thing that we do.
I think, I think Juberry has done in their report, I think so, Cumberland, they did a sample.
They did, yeah.
So they may have taken pictures and maybe those pictures can be shared with Steve, and we can put together a little bit of a portfolio to show how many there are, but yeah, it's.
I would like to understand.
But exactly, and then people, you know, I think that, that whether you change the law or not, I think that there are many of our citizens that are going to be willing to comply because they want, because they're concerned about safety, and they also want it to look nice. So, so I'm glad everybody is on top of this. The next item is introduction of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to prohibit use of registered pesticides on town property and in parkland, and to relocate section one-seven-seven-two concerning injury to town property to chapter one-forty-nine, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance was discussed at the previous work session. The main changes are, one, that it would prohibit use of, basically, this issue arose because we're, we voluntarily opted into Montgomery County's pesticide law, but that only actually applies to private property, not public property. So this would fix that by opting us into it on all public property in town. And then the second part is it would relocate a wayward section of the code to a place where we fit better. One note I will make about this is that there's yellow highlights, and that's not this ordinance, that's the next ordinance for discussion, they're just back the same areas of the code.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Attorney, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, Mr. Mayor, yeah, other than to reiterate, the county law does apply, but we noted that the county law, as EJ said, only applies to county-owned property. So this would extend the county's pesticide registration list to prohibit use of such on town-owned property.
Okay, I move. Thank you. I move. No, wait, we have questions.
I was going to get the motion on the floor.
President, well, first we asked questions before. Okay, do you have any questions, President Bar?
I, I have a question off the other, next one that is relevant to this one, which is about, I don't think. other, next one that is relevant to this one, which is about, I don't think we should allow removal of leaf compost or leaf mulch, but we can give them, that's really the next ones.
Okay, but do you have any questions about this one?
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Haller, do you have any questions?
Does this mean that if I want to nuke my lawn, you can't? Do I have, every house, is this just public property?
It's public.
This doesn't, this ordinance only affects private, own, private property.
But it's already true that you can't.
But you already can't do that.
You're, you already can't on your own property. But, but this would mean you also can't apply pesticides in the town park.
Right now, we could nuke the park.
But I can't nuke my lawn.
Yeah.
Mosquito squad?
Hold up, hold up. Do, did you get your question answered?
Did, you know, um, I will say that the other morning when I was swimming, the pesticide people were out and they were, they were spraying the back area of the pool where the grass was. And I wondered if this was like toxic or not, because of the smell. And I assumed it's not.
Yeah, and, and pesticides, certain pesticides are allowed as long as they, uh, um, are OMRI listed for EPA exams or from organic gathering.
Yeah, I think with it, it was for mosquitoes, my guess, that's what that was.
Well, I think that's something that should be investigated.
I can investigate that. How to see if it falls under.
He should investigate.
Categories.
Okay, did you, did you have any other questions?
No, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kumar, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but if at a future date, Robin wants to institute an ordinance for composting at the pool, I will be supportive. But no question on this one, thank you.
Okay, we'll take note of that. Councilmember Rovak.
Um, I don't have any questions.
Councilor Khan.
Uh, uh, yes, I know this is the right place, so we'll do it next, the next one. Um, I had, this is, this is, uh, the generic text that applies to both, um. I think at the work session, we had discussed, um, in one forty-nine two, um, paragraphs P and R. Um, so in P, I think we had discussed last time whether to state that it was prohibited to enter in an unauthorized manner or to trespass into the fenced pool area or bathhouse or tennis courts. Is there a reason why we decided not to include tennis courts in P?
Well, let's ask the town attorney who drafted it, why you didn't.
Hmm, yeah, I apologize, Rohit, I forgot to add that. Yeah, so that can be added now with the motion.
You can, you can, are you prepared? Do you, you're ready to move the introduction?
Yeah.
Do you want to move it with that amendment?
Okay, so I would make a motion to amend.
Well, you're introducing it and, and then, and then the town attorney will put in what the law.
As amended, yeah.
Yeah.
Into the fenced tennis courts.
Yes.
Pool area or bathhouse, so we just add tennis court comma.
Okay, so you understand, you're, and you're, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's introduced.
And then in paragraph R.
But wait a minute.
Yeah, sorry.
Is this in the same?
The same section, yes.
So it was already introduced?
Yeah, it's a different paragraph, I don't know.
But is this for a different?
It's, it's a different, it's a difference.
Is it for the next one?
Technically, it can be saved for the next one.
Okay, why don't we save it for the next one?
For.
We don't have another introduction.
Well, in, 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 in my version, the change was made to R. So R says to loiter in any town park or any town property period, and we've removed the exception.
Well, okay, I don't know for why my, my, that's, that's a kind of. Yes, that's fine, if it stops at the prop- town property, then I'm fine with it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, so this is introduced. The next, the next one is introduction of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to expressly prohibit the removal of vegetation and biomass from town property, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance has also been discussed at a work session and has to do with the removal of biomass at a town property. And I will let you know, and the council president brought this up, is at the work session, there was some discussion about, uh, whether or not to exempt leaf compost and leaf mulch. And so this version, uh, does not prohibit it, but that can be amended to prohibit those two items.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Attorney, do you want to add anything?
Um, so yeah, in my, in my version, we did eliminate the provision allowing leaf compost to be removed. So let me see what's different in your version.
Did you drop another version perhaps?
Well, the, the, the version that is being considered now.
Yeah.
Is the one that EJ sent to the council.
Okay, yeah, so the, the last sentence in paragraph E shouldn't be there anymore. This does not prohibit the removal of leaf compost or leaf mulch. That is omit, that is to be admitted.
All right, uh, so anyway.
So hold on, hold on a second, so is the version that was sent out, the one that you sent? Uh, I mean, or the one, or the one that Ron, sorry. Is everybody clear about what the version is?
I sent out the most recent version that I have.
That you sent today?
Is that, is that the one that you had, Mr. Town Attorney?
No, I, I have a, a newer one.
Okay, so when, so when they introduce it, they have to amend?
Yeah.
They have to amend this, okay. Council President, Council President Barr, do you have any questions?
Uh, well, a generic question, how do we get this sorted out? Is, maybe it's better to do this, postpone this one month to the July meeting. Have the new version posted.
This is just now that you can talk about when you, but do you have any questions about this?
I have no questions about the intent of it at all.
Okay, thank you.
Take a little language in it.
In a few minutes, you'll be able to debate that. Council President Haller, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I'm not the council president.
I mean, council member, sorry.
Just declared.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying about Robin. Okay, Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
Sorry, I was muted, no questions.
Okay, Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
So I'm looking at this one that I have. And then so we're saying that E is like the question to cut or remove any vegetation, tree, wood, shrub, plant, that one?
Yeah, uh, but the last.
It's the last, the newer version our attorney is telling us about does not have the last sentence in it, which is.
Does not prohibit the removal of leaf compost or leaf.
Yeah, everything else is the same. But that's what I'm saying, we should probably have the new version.
Hold on, you'll have a discussion.
So.
She's asking questions.
So does, what is, so the leaf compost or leaf mulch, does that mean like when they blow the leaves and then they come and pick them up on the street?
No, that, this is a specific color of the town parks, not like people's drapes.
So like here?
Here, yes.
They wouldn't rake or blow the leaves and pick them up?
Yeah.
They, so is that? Does this, um, does this introduction say that we would not do that, or does it say we would?
The one in the package says that we would still break one.
We would still blow them and clean and pick them up?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But this one.
But the, what the new one says.
The newer one, Ron, has, would, uh, is, is not.
So that means that the leaves would just stay in the park? And, um, like through the winter?
Well, the town could still, uh.
I think the question is.
The, the town could still do it and the town would do it, but private residents couldn't. So it wouldn't affect like actual election, because this is like saying, so like our guys can still go out there and still will go out there and break them, but nobody else could.
Like I can't go and bring my blower out and. My electric blower.
I can't believe we have to legislate.
Okay, do you have it?
I think I'm clear now.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Khan, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, all right, Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Uh, yes, yeah. So um, I will introduce the, uh, motion to introduce the ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to express the prohibit the removal of vegetation and biomass from town property now.
So are you introducing the one that was submitted or do you want to amend?
This is the issue, it, it, the question is, do we want to vote on this or do we want?
But now your, now your motion is, do, are you, what do you want to, do you want to make a motion to?
I recommend we introduce this as is and before we adopted, we amended to the.
Okay, so, right, so, but this is, he is the floor now. So what would you like to move, Mr. President?
All right, so I move it with the amendment that, uh, E under one forty-nine two, uh, drops the last sentence, which is, which is, the sentence says, this does not prohibit the removal of leaf compost or leaf mulch. Um, and also the, what was, Rohit, you had yours earlier, wasn't it, on this?
Okay, so.
In paragraph P, after the word fenced, we add tennis courts, comma.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
And then in.
Okay, that's good. Okay, remember, the president has the floor, working with the town attorney to come up with the motion.
All right, so it is amend, uh, paragraph E to remove the last sentence, amend P to add the tennis courts, comma, fence pool area or bathhouse. Um, is that it?
There's, there's, there's one more.
R.
In, correct, yeah, we make the change to R, stopping the sentence at property, town property period. And then in O, EJ noted a typo, it says to ride a bicycle on other than a paved vehicular road, so it should say to ride a bicycle on any surface other than a paved vehicular road, so we would add any surface after the word on, to ride a bicycle on any surface.
Okay, do you accept all this, your motion?
Uh, yes, I accept all these changes to my motion.
Excellent.
Right.
So does everybody understand what the motion is and who wants to second it?
I second.
Okay, good. Is there discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
O, to ride a bicycle, you can't ride a bicycle out there on the grass? Is that what this means? That you can only ride on the sidewalk through the street?
Yes, I mean, that, that's what, that's what it currently means.
Why is this a big?
We, we, we've talked about how there are some provisions in the code the council may wish to revisit one day. It, it's also unlawful to climb a tree.
Yeah.
So, you know, but, but right now, we're just correcting a typo, regulation's already there.
These are all good questions. Now fortunately, before this will be, would be considered, could be considered, there's going to be a work session. So we will, we will put this as an agenda item on the work session, so you can talk at any amendments you might want to do. Okay, so is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, thank you. So you, you all were excellent legislators. And the last item is, uh, the one that Councilmember Haller added regarding scheduling an event for the Somerset whales, so I'll move, move it up to you to
Okay.
Say what your motion is.
My motion is that we approve the Somerset whales, uh, swim event on Sunday, July thirteenth, from eight to eleven, which means the pool will be closed. Um, and, um, that's my motion.
Okay, so Council President Barr, do you have any questions about that?
Uh, no, I have no questions.
Okay, Councilor Kumar.
I, I don't, I'm assuming that we, I don't know what day it is, but it, no conflicts, right, with any?
Already checked, no conflicts, we're good.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
So it's only opening at one hour late?
Exactly, one hour late.
I don't have any other questions.
Councilor Khan.
No questions, thank you.
And I guess, here's, okay, are you prepared? Okay, so you have a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.
Aye.
Well, I was ready.
Great meeting.